We'll get ready to go less than a minute. Bring more to the cloud.
Recording in progress.
This meeting is being recorded.
Yeah.
Everybody like to stand and pledge allegiance, please?
Thank you, Heidi.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America. And to the people of this country. I'm a citizen of the United States of America.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. If I could get, oh, confirm we have a forum? We do?
We do, we do. Again, Tony online.
Okay, can I get approval of the agenda, the consent agenda, and the minute June 17th, 2023's regular council meeting, please? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any correspondence? Tia?
No.
Right, items from the public, is there a sign up sheet over there, Heidi, please?
You have all kinds of duties today. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is it Joanne Gerginsky or Joan Gerginsky? John Gerginsky.
Okay, so I want to thank everybody for listening to our problem. Anyway, Aberdeen has a deal for their 55 and older trailer. For, and we would like to have the city of Raymond do the same thing for us. Pass an order where the owner can only charge a percentage of two to three percent on a rent. Because by everybody that's in our trailer court that's 55 and older are either on social security or social security with a, like a pension or something. And it's getting to be where we can't afford any higher rent. And so making it hard for the older senior citizens to live there. And you cannot move your trailer out of the area, even if you can afford it. Because it's an ordinance where you can't move out of Pacific County or Great Harbor. And so we would like the people of Timberline were used to pass the ordinance where they would have to give a six month notice before they raised the rent. And only go up two or three percent, otherwise a lot of the senior citizens are going to be having to pitch in and find a place to put them. Okay, I want to thank you all for listening to us.
Okay. And I will respond to that, John. Tia did some research today and she did find the ordinance. It was presented the 28th of June to the city of Aberdeen. And it, the ordinance is not specific to percentages. It says relating to increasing the notice period prior to substantial rent increases. It doesn't, it is not specific in the ordinance as to how much that rent increase is or what that's, what the notice period is. So I have the ordinance right here in my hand. So I have reviewed it and I've looked through it and I do not see any of that information in the ordinance. There was an attachment, it wasn't available online. So I will do some further research and see what exactly they, what exactly the ordinance says in the attachment, once I can find it. So, but it doesn't say anything specific about how long or if there's a percentage that they can't exceed. I, I've never heard of them not, that the city has any kind of power over a renter or an owner, but I will take a look.
I just know that we went to the one in Aberdeen to support the one in Aberdeen. And that's what came up on, on their agenda was to have the where they quit the phrase thing without a six month notice or a two and only go up two or three.
Okay, like I said, I do have the ordinance here and I will, I will look into it further. But in the ordinance I have in front of me that was presented on the 28th, it does not have any, any time period or any percentages in the ordinance. So, all right?
Okay, thank you.
You bet, but I will look into it. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that is here today that wanted to speak?
Could I say the lease agreement with, you guys can have your lawyer look at?
I don't, that is, the, their city cannot do anything. It is definitely a civil matter and it's between the tenants and the, it's a landlord tenant issue and it's a civil agreement. And there's nothing that we can do other than, you know, like I said, we'll look into the ordinance that Aberdeen passed and see what they have said and in their ordinance. But other than that, I, I just, the city is, we can't get involved in civil matters. So, I mean, you're welcome to have your own attorney take a look at it.
Is there a nonprofit?
There is a nonprofit.
There's a girl that lives across the street from me that has seen three or four lawyers who are supposed to help her. She hasn't demanded for a lawyer. And the last lawyer she met here in Raymond, and I did not get the name of the organization that said you have a.
I, I think, I think council member Vaughn can give you some information. I'm aware of an organization, it's a nonprofit that I have dealt with when I worked in South Bend that has helped.
So they couldn't help her.
But I think this, I think this one can.
I, I'll think of it, I do, but it's actually, you call it seniors.
Justice Project, yes.
And that, remember, sorry.
Here, here, Chau Vaughn.
I got, we just, here. Yeah, so, no, I don't remember, we, you know, that just, this is specifically something that they work around throughout the state of Washington. They have over 300, 300 volunteer terminals. And they can do basically, use for you and you can accomplish other additional supports. They'll have to call, their hours are eight and two to six AM and you have to like keep calling, keep calling to get groups, just to be very diligent. You can't take a little bit of time. And September 3rd.
Okay.
And you'll need to call them.
Yes. Yeah, Chris, go ahead.
Is Timberline strictly a treatment park? Do they do RV, nice RVs also?
No, it's all, all tour. So we have, we did have 52 trailers. Now we're down to four or five because some people had to move out because they couldn't afford the rent anymore. They had to move in with their family. There are a few empty trailers and they're trying to sell them, but the thing makes it bad is the owner of the trailer court has to prove the person that buys it. And if they don't like you, I guarantee you, they won't let the person buy the trailer from you. Unless you come way down on the price. And we had a couple of people already that had to sell their trailers cheaper than they wanted.
Okay, any additional comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. To item number seven, resolution 2023-05, a resolution of the city of Raymond, Washington, adopting the six year transportation improvement plan for 2024 through 2029. And this was tabled from 6/17/23. And before we go further, if you guys want to leave, you can. If you want to stay, you're welcome to. So if you need something to help you sleep tonight. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Thank you.
You bet.
Absolutely.
Do I hear a second? Okay. We'll just wait a second.
We, we're just.
Yeah, I'm waiting till they leave and then we'll do a discussion. Yes. Have a good evening, folks, and thanks for coming. And I will, I'll let John know what I come up with.
Thanks very much.
You bet.
For listening to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so discussion?
Do things get fixed that were on the transportation? Because wasn't that why we tabled it there?
No, we tabled it because the whole, the full packet wasn't available for the council to review.
Okay.
So the resolution only, but it did not include the, the additional information on each project that was on the plan. Yeah, so now it's all there for you to review. So that's the reason it was tabled. So we had the public hearing already and now I just need approval of the resolution. So any additional comments, discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Matt?
Motion carried. All right. Item number eight, TIB bid award for Gerber, Elwood, Harvard Street pavement improvement projects. We need approval of who award this project to the highest bidder, which, or the low bidder, which was, which was Lakeside Industries, Inc. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second, okay, any, for any discussion? Hey, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
They are going to do that this summer, right?
Yes. I believe it should have had a timeline, usually does have a timeline in here. If it doesn't, I'm certainly, I can certainly get you one, but normally it has a time. And then I'm going to request a motion to approve and one motion, items nine, 10, and 11, for me to sign TIB grant application for Willapah, Riddell, Fowler, Jackson, and Raymond, South Bend, Elm, Bradford, Lower Jackson Street, grant applications. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Would.
Okay, discussion? Okay. Well, they're applications. We, we hope to be, that's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. We have, there's been a lot of movement with the pool. I will explain to you, the council, what I have proposed to the pool board. And I will let Karen step in where she feels, especially if I miss stuff. We had a, maybe I should start at the beginning. I can tell you that ABC and Jewel, party of ABC, the city, the pool board, and at one time, bless Leon's heart, had a passion, he had a passion for the pool, as you all know, Leon has passed away. Everybody was kind of doing their own thing, nobody really knew what everybody's doing. We had a meeting last Tuesday, got all the pieces and parts and pieces together. I think everybody now is officially on the same page. I had a separate meeting with Michelle from Pool, just her and I, and explained to her what my proposal is going to be to the council. There's just been a lack, a severe lack of leadership at the pool. And there's a lot of things that have potentially had the potential to cost the city a lot of money because of that lack of leadership. So my, my proposal to the city is going to be that the city fully take over the pool. We manage the pool, we hire and fire the lifeguards, we hire a director who will oversee the pool. They, we keep whoever that is on with a small, very small stipend during the winter months that can go over once a month, check the pool, make sure everything's okay. Make sure that there's nobody, has broken, no vandalism. And in return, the pool, P O O L, will be responsible for, at this point in time, $40,000. They will be required to pay the city to help offset the cost. Right now, I think that's the way, way I'm looking at it. It's probably about 40, about 50% of the cost of running the pool. They will be required to report to the, report to the council monthly. They'll be required to provide the council with their minutes from their pool meeting, pool, monthly pool board meetings. And they'll be required to submit a minimum of, of a five year capital outlay project plan to budget. Everything that goes into that capital outlay project plan, the city will pay 50%. The pool will pay 50%. So they need to continue to fundraise heavily, they need to save their money, and they need to plan ahead. The city, I made it very clear to Michelle, the city will not pay for a new heater because that was mismanagement by the pool. The heater is for the pool, we're looking at $80,000 to $100,000 to replace the heaters. Right now, we're, I think there's three heaters and we're limping along with one. Praying every day, and I think the only saving grace is the weather. It's been hot and it's helped relieve the pressure off of that one heater. So praying we get through this season without it, they don't.
Good question.
Yes.
It's 80 to 100,000 for all the years, not just.
Right, it's, it's a one full heating system. Yeah. I wish Eric was here, they've been looking at the difference between electric and propane, which one would, would work the best for that? I know, I, I made it clear to Michelle that I didn't care how, how pool came about, it, the money. It just wasn't in the city's coffers. Yes.
Perhaps if they don't come up with $4,000 a year.
Then there's no pool.
That's what I mean, it, it shut down.
Yep.
So they, they're $5,000 short.
Then, then that falls on them.
Not, not, I'm just curious how.
I, I've seen their profit and loss, they bring in about 70,000. So I, if, I can't imagine.
They do that over the season?
Yes, they bring in over 40,000 just in swim fees. So that's something that, when the, that's something that when this contract comes to you guys, that's something I want you guys to look at very hard because 40,000 may not be enough.
So are we including fundraising and pool fees in that 40,000?
No. That's how I told Pool or Michelle at that time, I didn't care how they got to their 40,000. They had to pay the city 40,000 once a year. How they got there, I didn't care. So.
So pool fees are part of that, it's just the fundraiser?
It's, it could be their swim fees, it could be fundraising, however they get to that 40, I'm not going to look at. I know, Chris, you're.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so describing to me a little bit, relationship between, we're going to hire a director pool, what's the relationship between those two entities?
The director would be hired by the city to oversee and manage the pool. They're not going to be, they're not going to be a lifeguard, they're not going to be a maintenance person. They're going to be oversee the pool completely. They will be there daily overseeing the pool, they will check people in, they'll oversee the money, they will watch, you know, they will report back to the city, this is broke, this needs to be fixed, this, that, other.
Pool's role is strictly a fundraising role.
And to, yes, strictly a run, a fundraising role, and they will still collect the money. They will still be there to, they're still the nonprofit that will pretend, well, somewhat oversee the pool, but we are still responsible for the employee.
So I guess, okay, so it's, it sounds like that the operating agreement between Pool and the city needs to be.
It's, it's in the works, I hadn't got there yet, Chris. I sent all the information to Joel as, as to what we are talking about tonight and explained it, and he's working on that agreement. So, okay.
Last thing, me. Just my, my view of the asset and we, us owning the asset, the city owns that pool.
Which we, yes, we already do, so yes.
So I'm not sure, or I don't think that the nonprofit should be involved in any capital outlays to the pool. However, if the nonprofit wanted to take on a fundraising effort for a specific capital improvement, okay, I get that. But on an ongoing basis, it's our asset, our accountability to take care of that pool. It's not theirs.
I get your point, however, they're a nonprofit and they have the ability to go for the grants and get the funding that the city does not.
Yeah.
So that is why I, I want them to be held accountable and be responsible for 50% of that capital outlay. Because you could be looking at $100,000 or more for relining the pool.
Yeah.
So they have to, I, I'll say it, they have to be held accountable and they're feet to the fire or it's going to be same stuff, same day, over and over again.
Well, I, I think for me, it's just a conceptual issue or problem that it is not their building, it is our building. Whatever, you know, if we decide that building, we're going to sell that building in the future, they're not going to share the profits of that building or whatever. Yeah. So I'm not sure, I, I can see their role as a fundraising vehicle or case this per, like, we're going to replace the heaters, we need to raise 100 grand and the, and the, you know, the pool organization can need to fundraise, I get that. And I think they could be very useful in that. But I think in the, in the final analysis, that is our building, that is our asset, it is not theirs.
So what, what motivates them? If they bring in $70,000 a year, and that's low, if they bring in $70,000 a year and they only pay us 40, what motivates them to do anything?
I'm, I'm not sure, I don't know, I, I mean, it depends, it depends what the operating agreement says. I mean, if they are just there as a fundraising vehicle.
But they're not, they're still a part of it. They still have some capacity to, to volunteer, we need volunteer. We will hire.
Will they be city employees then?
No, they, they will be city employees, they'll be city employ, I'm still working through this. But then, but I'll tell you, part of the reason, and, and part of the reason I wanted to go this route too, is currently, when they bring in these lifeguards, they send them over, these lifeguards are paying out of their pocket $350 to come back over here to be a lifeguard and make minimum wage. Would you do that? Would any of you do that? I wouldn't do that.
I understand what you're talking about, wanting Pool to be responsible of, of helping pay for heaters when, over the years, they refuse to take that money that they made and, and help us maintain, it's all about the maintenance of the building. It is our facility, it is up to us to maintain, but because of the past, what I think you're doing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you simply want to incorporate into that their responsibility to be responsible people working with us and not just put it off. And because we didn't know they were that bad.
Right.
We didn't have the information, we, we didn't have to communicate if, if I'm.
And I think Karen can agree, we didn't, and.
And by not having that, then that puts it worse on us. So if you give them some accountability in maintaining the facilities, because really, and if they're, if they're taking the money, then they should have some maintenance responsibilities to the facility that they're using. Well, I would agree with that if they're operating, but it doesn't sound like they're going to be operating.
Yes, but we, they, the board, first off, we don't even, we are not even in compliance with the bylaws right now. We don't have a, we have three people that were not even in compliance. Okay, so we've got a meeting next week or next, yeah, next week, we'll get in compliance with our bylaws. But then you have a full board and, and members that want to sit, and then you have volunteers, people that want to come down because you're director, this is not even this year. Next year, you have the pool rentals for birthday parties, you have special swims, you have multitude of things that happen at that pool that the director, she's not going to spend seven days a week down there, 12, 14 hours a day. That's why you have a pool board and volunteers then step up and say, I will take care, I'll volunteer and work that party. I'll volunteer and work this party, I'll come in, we need some extra cleaning that day. That's why you have a pool board to do those things and work with the director. Which is, if you look back in the minutes, back in the day, we had a list filled of names that volunteered every day at the pool. So. I understand where you're coming from.
I, I'm just, I'm trying to envision how, how this agreement works and it's.
But you, we haven't seen it yet.
Yeah.
I don't know what it's going to look like myself.
Well, go back in history, years ago, the city hired a manager. And manager did it all. And it was, it was.
We never, the city, I don't believe, has ever paid.
So in my research, we had an old binder and it did have information of that. It said in the 50s when it opened, it was ran and operated by the city, and that was up till the 80s.
Oh, I was, I was there.
Yeah.
I still have a pretty good memory, and I can tell you who the managers were.
Yeah.
And typically what they did is they, they went, got college students. That was, or teachers.
Someone else had the summers off.
Teachers that managed, there was college students managing. And those people were given a three month contractor assignment, you run it. That's, that was their deal, so they weren't there year round, it was part time, you know, on and then gone.
Meeting, I can't help you, you can go talk to grandmother.
There wasn't, if, well, there wasn't this 501(c)(3) scene then at that point.
So hang on just a second, Joel, if you want, if you need more time, I can call you, we're in a pool discussion right now. Okay, go ahead, Chris.
So anyway, I'm just, I'm just, I, I, yeah, I, here, I understand where you're going. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how this thing's going to match. Because if you make it work, then, you know, so be it. But I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, if you got a director, to me, he's the director, he runs it.
But he's.
He's got a pool off to the side that wants to do all these things.
But he's going to work, he's going to be part of the pool.
Okay.
He's going to be part of the pool, he's not, absolutely.
AFL certified.
All right.
So we'll see how it comes together.
Yeah.
Speak, please.
No, I didn't. No, I didn't.
The pool closed for probably the eighteen years. And in the late nineties, they decided, well, we really need this pool. We're gonna start this school group got together, decided to fundraise, grant, write, come up with a way to real. So they did all that. It got completely revamped and re um. You know, organized, but also rebuilt um by two thousand and two. I've been through all the the box documents. So they had a full board then of at least six people. They had at least a dozen fundraisers that they did. Um that were written into these grant applications. And um then at some point after that. They were running the pool at brand new pool, right? Again, they're running it and the um. The agreement that I read is the most recent agreement that signed in twenty seventeen. Um and it put the responsibility for the operations and the management of the pool and maintenance. Of the pools on the pool board. Building is owned by the city. The city wouldn't do the maintenance outside around the pool. But the whole running of the whole thing was on the pool board, this nonprofit organization. Well, so at some point, they lost most of their board members.
All of them.
So um you know, they're down to three board members. Um and I think that by a lot of their.
But that but that kind of goes to my point. Is then. The asset goes into disrepair. Our asset goes into disrepair because there's some dysfunction with the organization running. And so then we're standing there going, well, now we need three heaters of eighty grand or a hundred grand.
Which is.
That that that's that's the dilemma, I think, you've got to stay away from. Somehow another this director and this board has got to take care of this asset.
And that's why I'm I'm taking it out of the. Taking that out of pooled hands. Because we can't do this anymore.
Yeah.
We can't.
No.
Because because had it been, had it been different. I do not believe we would be sitting here today discussing this. We would not have let heaters sit all winter with chlorine in them. Bottom line.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Joel.
So having a physical nonprofit sponsor is very standard practice. Second off, given the the kind of direction of the board, I've got a lot of eight back members involved with it. Uh there's a real there to actively engage directing and having this type of advisory panel. There's also understanding that they don't have the capacity or the knowledge themselves to navigate or to actually do. The maintenance operations of it. I would love to see the agreement to give an idea about this forty thousand. I feel like that's being very generous. I know with operating a somewhere built building. Uh that those costs are um great estimates, but if anything changes in that market, if any supply becomes different in that market. That changes the entire impact. I also think that in order to build succession among generations, it's important that the city maintains control over our assets. But if we have a volunteer led advisory board panel that's willing to actively engage in that fundraising process. And utilize that vital one C, you know, that breaks that money off of us going through a banking account eventually. It allows them to fund a lot of, and also we do it in about seven different communities that have done it in a similar pattern. The thing that changed most importantly for most of those communities was the centralized director themselves. Self funded themselves at one point because they were getting basically a grant they got, they got three percent of the grant. Right? And they began to self fund themselves instead of full operation maintenance teams onsite. Uh and on some of them, they've been bought by the private community or area that took over the area or whatever, but it was too early to be able to still operate. So it's actually a pretty intelligent way to break that viability, but also give us as a city. Uh not the burden of coming up with a grant or trying to seek all all the funding seeds for it. Allow that director to act and things. I would like to see, you know, I would say that as a director, it's imperative that the city doesn't play director in that manner. They we need to break that break off grants because that will motivate the workers to get the type of grant funding that we can correct. Grants, preparation grants, and they can support Eric on that duty too, so that he's not getting another asset that's gonna require. Hours and hours of extra grants. So that would just be my, there's my, there's my sense.
And and I and I wanna, I want this noted too that um. Um Jewel is applying for the one time maintenance grant for a hundred thousand dollars. And I made it very clear to Michelle that money would not go for the heaters. So um I so I've said it here on the record. Um. I can tell you that they're probably close to, what, forty thousand dollars just since last week in donations.
Over thirty.
Over thirty for sure, yes.
Um so it's fine. Um so about the five year catalog, I would project plan, I think that is a good, if they have a part in that because. It gives the community a stake in the pool, and I think that that is necessary. And I know, I I know, cause you don't. Feel like that, feel like that's all somehow, but if the public has no way of staying what they want. Then they're not gonna be as motivated, and I think that this gives the public a chance. To say, yes, we would like this in there. Yes, we want a new flash pack. Yes, this is how we want this in a couple of years. So I I think that is an important part of the agreement.
And and it will be, it's gonna be a part of the budget. It has to be. You know, we have to start somewhere and.
And I think that if they if they do that, then they should find a way to fund those things. Which once again will give the city's residents more skin in the game, and then the capability. To, you know, look at it and say, oh, yeah, we we hope to do that.
I I think that's important. And for what it's worth, good, bad, or indifferent, I feel like we have all these assets, the pool, the heater, the this, the that. And they all just sort of take backstage somewhere in the budget that gets underfunded. And just sort of overlooked. And if we're gonna have them, we need to do something with them. If we're not gonna do anything with them, then get rid of them. And the pool is one thing that I feel like. The public really wants to have, and if we're gonna do that, then we need to figure out a way to make it work. And what 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 we're doing now isn't working, so we gotta do something else. Yes.
I would like this put in the. Agreement. They put the locker rooms back to where they used to be. Cause they they switched them. When we were growing up, the men were always on the right hand side. Not time to go down there. I go on the right hand side.
Yeah, and that doesn't have anything to do with it, I know.
They can't stand the same experience with James.
So, so.
I could never figure out why they did it. There was absolutely no reason.
That's the way with a lot of things in mind. But I have, I I wanna applaud Karen. She's worked so hard on this and and. And uh Tia as well, they have done an outstanding job. Tia has spent a lot of her personal time down there. And a lot of time researching and looking back at old documents and trying to help me figure out the best way to do this. Um so, you know, all we can do is push forward and approach the task. Alright, so moving on, uh Department Head reports, Fire Chief Bill Didion.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So August first marked the completion of the one year probationary period for two of our members. Um Bryce Nichols and Chris Rocket, and I'm gonna let you know that I'm very, very proud of both of them. They've done an outstanding job and they've been in a huge addition to our department. So Bryce, for those who know him, he was, you know, he's. Best in this community. He had a um. A job with the PD for many years, and he had the courage to make a switch and join our department. So. That took a lot of courage and uh he's done amazing, and he's been a great addition to our department.
Chris, uh he's a young, very bright paramedic that came to us from the Spokane area. And he's done amazing, settled in well, and um he's a great fit for our department. And uh they both have bright futures with us, so. Very happy, I'm very excited about the future with those two. Yeah. We had a a good weekend and. I just wanna go on record and thank Chief Matlock and Dana Williams for putting together National Night Out. That was a a great event. They put a lot of hard work and effort into that. And the community came out strong to support it, and so. Thank them both. That's about all I have. If you guys have any questions. So we have one, and it's been doing doing awesome for us. Uh it's it's very much in service and. Um the tools on it have worked out amazing. Uh the power load journeys have. I think they've already saved some back injuries and um the Lucas CPR device um. Had some great success, so very happy about it. We're looking at. I'm thinking probably September for the next one, which is amazing. Um so that should be here before we know it. So. That process was very exciting and, you know, can't say enough the support that we've got for those, so. Good things.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, uh please, Police Chief.
Well, thanks, thanks chief for uh mentioning us, but I really didn't have anything to do with it, but it's a community that actually put that together. Uh I'm very proud of our office and actually, you know, just about every employee in the in in the city, uh city crew was amazing, walking the streets off. And helping us with that. Uh National Night Out, I felt was a good success. I know some of you were there. I appreciate that as well. Uh the planning committee is already looking towards next year and making it even bigger and better. Uh we did do a kind of hot wash uh basically afterwards on what we could better, what were wrong, what were some of the complaints. You know, some were small, some were medium, but nothing real big, but things that could be fixed easily next year, uh just to make it run smoother. Uh Park was a great venue. The weather cooperated. That was phenomenal. Uh and then, you know, it was a long way because we shifted into the festival, uh Friday and Saturday. Uh I please report from a law enforcement standpoint that it was really, really nice. People, the people enjoyed being here. We didn't have any issues as far as reported to us as far as anything major. Uh you know, assaults and disorderly conduct or things like that. People minded their P's and Q's and seemed to enjoy the music and the vendors and. Uh everything else. Uh we checked out all the different areas, you know, we went down to the softball fields to make sure things were great there. They had eight or nine or ten competitive teams there and they played well into Sunday afternoon and just. I saw a lot of people I thought are gonna be sore Monday morning, let's put it that way, but uh it was excellent to see that. We had a lot of people that that really that you wouldn't imagine to be down there, were down there just because it was something to see and do. Uh I know the association made some money selling burgers and hot dogs and things like that. We can uh thank Nancy Brett Solomon for running that all weekend. Uh we didn't have any real parking issues down there. We had some people camping there, which we allowed for the weekend. Uh you know, they're gracious enough to ask us if we leave the bathrooms open for for the evening, and I thought, you know what? It's a hell of a way to watch over, make sure they're okay and everything else, and they can get some use out of them here in our city, so. That went well. Uh and of course, we went down the next day to make sure everything was taken care of. And uh the parade was great, even though it rained a little bit and, you know, it was short sweep of, you know, the police department, we needed to stock up on our candy game. Cause we ran out of about halfway. So uh but all in all, it was a great, it was a great event and uh. I think everybody that put the vault should be glad about that. And as far as our agency goes, we're doing pretty well. Um our calls are about about the same. They're pretty consistent. Um we've been pretty proactive. Today, we were able to uh get on a case that happened really quick involving somebody who may have been tried already on the road. A person was apprehended and put in jail. And within a matter of about twenty minutes. So uh being involved and being able to know that we have a strategic replaced people really help. So there you have it. Thank you for giving us the resources to do it again.
Any questions or comments?
I guess I'd say you're the best assistant with a rattle. Next year, I'm bringing my mic next year.
Well, you know, it's funny, that was in the hot wash part, but you know, we should probably have a microphone in the middle so everybody can hear.
Yeah, so we can get that.
So the other complaint it was is we need to have a bouncy house guard because some of the bigger kids would pick them up against. We'll fix that.
Yeah.
But I I just wanna say that overall, I think it was pretty well attended and really good. I mean, even the size of the town, there were a lot of people there. So I I agree those two, those two, Stigl, those two, the. The group that put it together, I think, was really well done and. You know. I think I think it reflected well on all the departments that were there and.
I I appreciate that. I think the organization of the beginning is 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 the way that makes it easier, you know, it's. It'll add on and add on and add on, but everybody had a say and everybody had a piece of ownership in it. And so that way it could be a group effort, not just somebody saying, like, choosing to do what you want and even not nobody else. So that that's the important part to us, but just wanted to make sure that we we get our city proud. So thank you for that, Tom.
Police departments, the environment works and gives me some time that much the kids enjoy hanging out with each other and. Just.
Garden's truck is pretty cool.
And then she finally gets some PD.
Oh, yeah.
Cause she was standing over there. I was down late, but early, I mean, and she was all by herself and she's like, I swept it up. She scrubbed that thing.
Yeah, it was, she had, she had a little bit of fun. As soon as they realized they could push the thing, that was over there. But it was, it was just such a great event. I think it really kicked off our weekend. That's what inspired people to have such great time.
What we're gonna wanna do is work with families, we exchange emails all the time, but. Uh our parking issue is starting to slowly take care of itself. We're starting to actually make get away on that. And we have a tracking system where uh we can tell what's to be in tow, what's not towed, and there's some bigger projects that we're still looking on. But I think all in all, by the first of the year, we'll see a a marked improvement on our streets, hopefully.
Yeah, and thanks to the officers. I sent, I went around one day and it was like I had added fifteen cars to the list. And in that weekend, I think everything was tagged and only three needed towed out of thirty, so. They worked hard on getting that list caught up.
I thought there was an ordinance that every household had that ten cars parked outside.
It's only Riverdale. Don't come by our houses. Okay, we have a tractor now. So um anybody, anything additional for um. Chief Matlock. Hey, uh Public Works Director Eric Wyver is not able to be here tonight. Um I'm sure everything is. He he's been out, so I'm sure, but everything is good. So um everything good in the office, Tia?
Yep.
Okay. Uh Mayor's comments, I don't have much. I've been out. Um. We left the first to go to Sweet Home, just got back today. Um I did receive a tremendous amount of complaints, emails, um phone calls. I was in touch with Pat, uh or Chief Matlock. I was in touch with. The Department of Transportation over the flags that were flying at the roundabout. Um. He he was, he didn't, he was not violating any any laws. He was on state right of way. He was visited by the Department of Transportation. They asked him to move his flags behind the roundabout sign. Whether he did or not, I don't know. But he had a stack of paperwork from every Circuit Court of Appeals this side of the Mississippi. He has, he has the right of freedom of speech. He can do what he wants. He so he was not violating anything. Whether we liked it or not, I was not going to engage in his propaganda. He was looking for a fight. I think that the chief will agree with that and you just, and I. I think it's just very ironic, because I think you all know what we all went through in June. If you don't know what I went through, stop by sometime and I'll tell you. But I just think it's very ironic that the people that were probably the most upset were some of the people that I supported. In June. So, you know. Everybody has a right to to have their say. So they're going now and they moved on and um I can tell you in Long Beach. Um a council member went up to him and told him, you are not welcome here. Pack up your stuff and go. And he said. I have the right to be here. It's my First Amendment right and. I'm not going anywhere. So.
What he wanted from us, and that is the best outcome that you can ask for.
That's right, and that's what I had hoped for. Everybody just leave him alone. If you don't engage, if you don't create a fight, if you don't create a stir. That and if that's what they're looking for, then they leave. So anyway, that's. My speech, things were great in Sweet Home, fifteen thousand in a town of nine thousand was a wild and crazy week. So anyway, so any public comments on the current agenda items? Hey, hearing none. Uh council comments.
Um I was gonna ask Karen, is there any need any help with the. Our city, oh, or are you, can we have more than two people on a.
Yes, you can have three. It's not a quorum. And I think they'd like to have you on the pool board. Just, just think about it.
You were looking at.
Yes.
Are you maxed out, Chon?
I'll have, uh, the Parks Committee, I don't know, but I, I can look and tell you when the next, the next pool board meeting is. Yeah, it is on the fourteenth, yeah.
The Parks Committee, I believe, was gonna be the same week. They were just waiting on Jewel to come back. She wanted to sit down with them.
Yeah. All right. So any additional council comments? Yes, Chris?
Hey, I noticed, and I think your representatives too, that our, our key park is, is actually moving forward. Uh, however, I'm yet to see any fence or landscaping.
It's pretty early for that.
I understand that. Uh, well, okay. You can say it was, should have been, however. What I'm concerned about is who does his occupancy forget?
Eric, and he will not get his approval until he has complied with his conditional use permits.
I think Eric has said that.
Yeah, he has said it multiple times.
Yeah, okay.
He, yes.
I think that um, proactively that. Somebody should remind the construction guy of that, just so we don't run into. Well, you never said I had to type.
You know, trust me, there is.
We made it pretty clear to him. I understand, but I'm.
We should put it in writing and send him a letter.
Well, I'm just, uh.
Oh, he had, he had just let me know. He was just reminded recently.
Okay.
So, and there's been a lot of. Eric could give, Eric could take you to lunch and spend three hours and tell you all the stuff that he has, that he has gone through in the last two weeks. So, or three weeks. So there, there is a lot of discussion.
Um, the other, the other uh, piece about that, and I um, talked to some. Talked to Eric about a long time ago, but on the back of this property where our old right wing are sitting there. I don't think it would be too bad an idea that we, city. Do a little plant, get your green belt for all. Just as a double protection. Mike Norton, the Conservation District, at one point said. Just as a thought, just after we get everything in, maybe take a look at it, see how it looks, if it needs something more.
Maybe send Eric an email. Maybe send Eric an email? Okay, well, just as a reminder.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good. Okay, please.
All right. Yeah, I got one thing I forgot to ask the fire chief. Burning in barrels, is it legal in city right now?
No, you're not supposed to burn in barrels.
Period, ever.
Okay, I live on the island.
Okay.
For the last three years. About dust. Wind blows right up the street and somebody's burning.
Okay.
I found it today.
Okay.
By the Hand and Playhouse. By the Hand and Playhouse.
No.
So.
It's on eighth street. It's the orange shade greenhouse. They, every night, same time, they burn their garbage. Every night.
Well, we can look into that and if you, the next time you notice it, just call down to the station, tell them what's going on.
I can do that. Cause it was nasty this morning.
That happened on Sunday at the festival. The entire park was smoked out, but it was right by the Hand and Playhouse, so.
Yeah, this is, this is regular.
Okay. Yeah, just uh, um, call down or, or.
Hey, we chose the big, work thing.
Yeah.
Any additional council comments? Okay, any future agenda topics? Hey, executive session, there will be no uh, decision made at the end of the executive session. So. I hope. Joel, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay, there, wait, there'll be no decisions made, correct?
Uh, right. We don't, you don't have a, is that right?
Recording stopped.
We're not in executive session yet.
Sorry. When we started?
No, I do need to get rid of credit. We tell them. Well, we, we'll return in fifteen minutes. That should be enough. There we know decisions. I didn't really catch it, but I don't think there was.